Abortion ban, one of the most extreme in the country, is hurting pregnant women in Georgia. After the Supreme Court overturned Roe v. Wade, a Georgia law took effect that banned abortion after only six weeks of pregnancy, when many women do not even know they are yet pregnant. Last year, as Chair of the U.S. Senate Subcommittee on Human Rights, I convened two public hearings to hear from women and doctors in Georgia about the impact that the six-week abortion ban has had on women's health. At these hearings, Georgia OB-GYNs testified that our state's abortion ban puts women's lives unnecessarily at risk and drives OB-GYNs out of Georgia, where over half of our counties already have no OB-GYN, and we have one of the highest maternal mortality rates in the United States. One OB-GYN testified that she had seen patients in the ICU with sepsis, with renal failure, needing tube feeding, hemorrhaging, or needing blood transfusions or hysterectomies, who would not have been in those dire straits if they had received the care they needed. We heard firsthand from women who testified that they were denied care and forced to carry high-risk, non-viable pregnancies. Today, we will hear from two women who nearly died because they could not receive care under Georgia's abortion ban and from a doctor about how the ban has undermined women's health care throughout our state. These harrowing accounts are a reminder of the severe risk and the severe harm that Georgia's abortion ban has caused and should serve as a warning to us all that abortion bans like Georgia's, one of the most extreme in the country, put women's lives and women's health at risk. I want to thank our speakers for taking the time to be with us today. I especially want to thank Avery Davis Bell and Callie Beal Harper, who are here to speak about their personal experiences seeking health care as pregnant women under Georgia's six-week abortion ban. Thank you both for your courage and your openness in sharing your experiences with the public. I know this is a complex issue that evokes strong feelings, and that is why it is critical that the public hear directly from women who have been impacted by Georgia's six-week abortion ban. And on that note, I will now introduce our speakers. Avery Davis Bell is a mother and a genetics researcher here in Georgia. She is pursuing a postdoctoral fellowship at Georgia Tech. Callie Beal Harper is a mother and an artist living in Savannah. And we're also so grateful for the testimony and expertise of Dr. Suchitra Chandra Sekaran, a maternal fetal medicine specialist and a member of the Society of Maternal Fetal Medicine. I would now like to ask Ms. Bell to address those assembled, and thank you so much for sharing your experience.
Thank you, Senator Ossoff and your staff, for the opportunity to share my devastating lived experience under our state's inhumane six-week abortion ban. My name is Avery Davis Bell. I'm a research scientist in genetics and mom to a three-year-old who asks for the science answer to his delightfully unending questions. I was born and raised here in Atlanta, and my husband Julian and I decided to return here to be near family before having children of our own. Last summer, we were thrilled to learn that I was pregnant with a long-planned-for sibling for our son. But we quickly began to worry about this pregnancy. I started bleeding at seven weeks. An ultrasound revealed a hemorrhage. Blood was pooling between my uterine wall and the sac protecting my growing baby. My doctors told us that while there is no known treatment for this type of hemorrhage, it often heals on its own. So we remained optimistic. Despite near-constant vaginal bleeding, my pregnancy progressed with frequent ultrasounds and genetic testing, all of which suggested we were having a healthy baby boy. So at 12 weeks, we felt good about sharing our news, most importantly, with our son, who was overjoyed, hugging my belly every day after learning that his baby was growing there. But then the bleeding worsened. At 16 weeks, I was passing blood clots the size of grapefruits and in and out of the hospital. My doctors determined I was losing too much blood, so they gave me an iron infusion to boost my waning strength and to keep my organs from failing. I was scared and exhausted from this painful cycle between home and hospital. Even when I was home, I was very weak and was placed on bedrest. My doctors were concerned. Instead of healing, I continued to bleed each day. They told me I was losing so much blood that I was fast approaching a crisis point, which would endanger my own life and my pregnancy. If that happened, they told me, I would need an abortion and a blood transfusion and possibly more extensive medical interventions to save my life. So we waited and we worried. At 18 weeks pregnant, while reading my son a bedtime story, I felt a sharp pain and passed a clot the size of a dinner plate. My husband and I scooped the terrifying clot into a container and rushed back to the hospital with it. There, we learned that my baby was showing signs of distress. We also found out that my water had broken much too early. My doctors warned me that I was now at high risk of developing a life-threatening infection called sepsis on top of my continued risks from blood loss and that my situation would become life-threatening. They also told me that miscarriage was inevitable. At 18 weeks, my baby would not be able to survive outside the womb, and since my water had broken, he could no longer grow inside of me either. My doctors assured me they were going to save my life. But because of Georgia's abortion laws, my doctors had to balance what was best for me in the moment with navigating legal red tape. Even with a doomed, non-viable pregnancy and at risk of death, I needed to be actively dying to receive a life-saving abortion. But determining when exactly I was dying, that's not black and white. And my doctors should not have had to wait to make that call because they knew I would get there. So I had to wait overnight, feeling worse each hour, soaking pads with blood and amniotic fluid. My family and I had to put grieving the loss of our expected baby on hold while my doctors vigilantly monitored my health, watching for me to worsen enough to get care. The next day, I had a dangerously low blood hemoglobin level, automatically qualifying me for a blood transfusion. Yay! It was surreal and twisted to feel relief that my health was obviously measurably failing. Doctors came rushing into my room. With this test result, they could at last prepare to operate. Almost a full day after I entered the hospital, I finally received a life-saving abortion, along with a blood transfusion and later, more iron infusions. Our second son was due to be born this month, Friday, three days ago. I continue to struggle with the pain of his loss, but also the pain and the dishonor of me and my expected child that the state of Georgia put us through. Why did I have to be put at risk of leaving our three-year-old motherless? The lawmakers and politicians behind Georgia's abortion ban imperiled my life and my family, and they continue to threaten the well-being of all Georgians. Tying doctors' hands until our lives are on the line is inhumane and unacceptable. I am deeply grateful to my doctors for saving my life and doing right by me despite Georgia's dangerous and medically unsound abortion restrictions. Politicians and government officials have no business dictating essential health care decisions with rigid restrictions that are fundamentally at odds with the complicated, nuanced reality of our pregnancies. In so many circumstances, like mine, abortion is life-saving care. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Bell. We'll now hear from Ms. Harper.
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you all for being here today. This is Callie Beal Harper. I am an artist that also holds a degree in Child and Family Development from the University of Georgia. I'm a lifelong follower of Jesus, and I am a devoted mother to my son Isaac and my daughter Kit. I am standing here to share a story that I never imagined would be mine to tell, a story that should not have happened, but did because Georgia's six-week abortion ban made it impossible for me to receive the care that I needed, and my daughter and I almost died because of it. I am here to speak not only for myself, but for the countless women who have reached out to me in quiet pain, who have endured similar tragedies but have suffered in silence, afraid of judgment, afraid of legal consequences, and afraid of being abandoned in their most vulnerable moments. I was thrilled when I found out that I was pregnant with twins in April of 2023. My husband and I were ready to welcome more children into our family. After an extended period of infertility, my heart was filled with excitement, and I immediately planned to buy double-baby carriers, and I dreamed of what a joy it would be to watch my two babies grow up with one another. But that joy was shattered around 12 weeks later when my husband and I received devastating news. One of my twins had severe structural and chromosomal anomalies. My doctor told me that continuing to carry both twins threatened the development and survival of my healthy twin and put me at risk of premature delivery and premature rupture of membranes, which would put me at a high risk for sepsis, a deadly infection. I was absolutely gutted. My doctor told me that I needed a selective reduction, a procedure to reduce the number of fetuses in my twin pregnancy as soon as possible to protect the other twin and myself. He advised me to seek care outside of Georgia because Georgia's restrictive law tied his hands. Georgia's abortion law does not match the practice of medicine. The specialist that I saw at around 12 weeks when I first received the news repeated over and over to have this procedure as soon as possible. He just repeated over and over to me, "As soon as possible, get this done." Being unable to receive care in Georgia and any additional delay would put me and the other twin at even greater risk for life-threatening complications. Literally, with the ticking of the clock, both mine and my daughter's life was becoming more and more at risk. My doctor further urged me to quickly secure multiple appointments in different states, only canceling once I had successfully received treatment because constantly changing abortion laws in other states could further delay my care. The pressure was immense. I planned to travel to North Carolina since it was the closest state at the time that could legally provide this procedure. But a change in their law on July 1st would have impacted my insurance coverage. My family and I had to navigate the financial and logistical burdens of travel while reeling with heartbreak and fear. I struggled to book appointments in other states and figure out how to pay for lodging and travel. Meanwhile, I was grieving. I researched the different milestones that my twins should have had, like finding each other in the womb. I was completely broken. I couldn't get an appointment until I was nearly 17 weeks, about a four-week delay in getting care that I knew that I needed, that my daughter also needed, and traveled all the way to Mount Sinai Hospital in New York City to receive the procedure. Everything that my doctor told me about came true. I began to leak amniotic fluid. When I returned to Georgia, I developed a fever and was sent to the emergency room, where I experienced the symptoms of premature labor and premature rupture of membranes. I was bleeding, contracting, and losing fluid. I screamed and I begged for someone to help me and my healthy baby. Soon after I was admitted to the hospital, I learned that I had a retained placenta from the twin that I lost and that I was becoming septic. I remember screaming and writhing in pain. I visited the emergency room 10 times in 10 weeks after that, sometimes being admitted before I prematurely gave birth to my daughter at 27 weeks. And I endured this largely on my own while my husband was forced to continue working so that we could both keep our health insurance. The trauma, the fear, the pain, it was unbearable. The sheer terror of not knowing if I would survive and if my daughter would survive. All of it was a direct consequence of a law that failed to recognize the urgent realities of maternal health care. I want to be very clear. My doctors and health care providers were not to blame. I can still name every single nurse that helped me survive my pregnancy. I am forever indebted to them, and I thank them all for everything that they did to save my life and save my daughter's life and protect my health. They did everything they could within the constraints of the law. The fault lies in medically unsound policies that ignore the realities of complex pregnancies and put women's lives at risk. Laws like Georgia's do not protect women. They endanger us. They force us to suffer needlessly, to scramble for care across state lines, to endure financial and emotional burdens on top of medical crises. Since sharing my story, I have heard from countless women that I know, love and respect, who have faced similar horrors but have remained silent out of fear. These are women that I served with within church ministries, women that I also know to be great mothers. This should not be happening in the shadows, and this should not be happening at all. Women deserve to be believed. Women deserve to be trusted. We are experts on our own bodies, our own pregnancies and our own pain. I am standing here today to demand that our voices be heard and that our experiences be acknowledged and that our lives be valued, not just in words, but in law and action. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harper. We'll now hear from Dr. Chandra Sekaran.
Good morning, Senator Ossoff and distinguished guests. My name is Dr. Suchitra Chandra Sekaran. I am a board-certified and fellowship-trained maternal fetal medicine subspecialist. And I am here today as a member of our National Society for Maternal Fetal Medicine, or SMFM, to discuss the harmful health impacts of Georgia's abortion ban on our patients. As a maternal fetal medicine specialist, I provide obstetric care for pregnant patients who are diagnosed with conditions or experience complications that make their pregnancies high-risk. I proudly take care of pregnancies affected by maternal health issues ranging from hypertension or high blood pressure and diabetes to cancer and complex, life-threatening heart disease. Throughout this care, I perform ultrasound imaging and provide genetic testing to assess fetal well-being. I speak here today as an individual who has the privilege and honor to care for patients and families as they experience one of the most emotional, social and physically challenging times in their lives. Georgia's ban on abortion care limits the ability of myself and my colleagues to provide evidence-based care and counseling, putting the well-being and lives of our patients at unnecessary risk. Every day, high-risk pregnant patients across the state are affected by Georgia's abortion ban as their care is denied or delayed. I want to thank, truly thank, both Avery and Callie for their strength and courage. I believe that our greatest chance of restoring access to full-spectrum reproductive health care is through brave patients sharing their experiences and demonstrating the real-life impact of Georgia's law. I am honored to be here today to provide additional information about how abortion bans prevent patients like Callie from getting the care they need when things go wrong during a high-risk pregnancy, especially with multiple fetuses. So in general, pregnancies involving more than one fetus, also known as multifetal gestations, face an increased risk of death or poor health outcomes for both the pregnant patient and fetuses. Pregnant patients carrying more than one fetus or more than twice as likely to develop gestational hypertension or high blood pressure in pregnancy, a leading cause of maternal mortality, and are at a greater risk of placental abruption and preterm labor and birth. Additionally, compared to pregnancies with one fetus, pregnancies with multiple fetuses have roughly a five times risk of stillbirth and seven times risk for neonatal death. Multifetal pregnancy reduction is a procedure usually performed in the first trimester or early second trimester to reduce the number of fetuses in a pregnancy to improve maternal health outcomes as well as the outcome of the remaining fetus or fetuses. In a case like Callie's, where one fetus has severe abnormalities, a multifetal reduction may be the only way to protect the other healthy fetus or fetuses and the pregnant patient. Likely, many, like many medical procedures for acute issues, multifetal pregnancy reduction is best provided as soon as it is recommended and accessible. And delaying care increases the risk of pregnancy complications associated with multifetal gestations. Moreover, delaying multifetal pregnancy reduction increases the risk of preterm labor and premature rupture of membranes, which is associated with a high risk of maternal sepsis, an infection that can be deadly if left untreated, and adverse neonatal outcomes, including stillbirth, preterm birth, and more. Our previous speaker, Callie Beal Harper, shared her experience with a multifetal pregnancy reduction after she found out that one of the twins she was carrying had multiple conditions that would severely reduce the likelihood of survival. We heard her share that in a time of grief, it took weeks to arrange and travel to New York City to get the procedure, even though her doctor in Georgia has the skills necessary to provide in-state care. While still in New York, Callie began to leak amniotic fluid, and a week later, as she said, she ended up in the emergency room in Georgia, developing a fever and becoming nearly septic. If not for Georgia's abortion ban forcing her to travel out of state, Callie would have likely avoided a life-threatening infection and a very early preterm birth that put Callie and her daughter at risk for severe complications. As a maternal fetal medicine specialist, I can tell you that if Callie had been able to receive a multifetal pregnancy reduction here in Georgia when it was recommended, the risk of her leaking early amniotic fluid and becoming infected would have been significantly lower. I want to be clear. Selective reduction is a safe procedure. However, when it is performed later in pregnancy, it becomes more complicated to perform and can lead to more complications. That is why the standard of practice in the states without arbitrary restrictions is to perform the procedure when promptly, when medically indicated. Callie's case is just one more example of a time when Georgia's abortion ban prevented a patient from receiving the best care, evidence-based best care as possible, putting her health and pregnancy at risk. Unfortunately, this story is not an isolated event. Pregnant patients across the state have experienced and will continue to experience a range of pregnancy complications and be forced to travel out of state for care that could easily be provided here. Like Callie, these patients face additional risks from delaying care and traveling under extreme duress. While Callie was able to share her story, others may not have that opportunity. Callie's experience and so many others highlight the harmful impact of Georgia's abortion ban on patients. The exceptions for medical emergencies and medically futile pregnancies are limiting and unworkable legal concepts when put into practice. You cannot define a medical emergency until it unfolds. You cannot deem a pregnancy medically futile until you see the scans and test results in front of you. For every health condition you can dream up for a list, there are countless more that could happen. No law can fully account for all aspects and complications of a pregnancy. Georgia's abortion ban puts patients across the state at risk, but the risk is even more acute in underserved communities that may lack access to specialty care, like mine and myself. I am committed to remaining in Georgia and providing the best possible care for my patients in this challenging environment. However, I would be remiss if I didn't share how frustrating it is to watch patients travel for care that my colleagues and I are fully capable of providing. High-risk pregnancies are already unexpected, life-threatening, emotionally traumatizing, and life-changing for all involved. Forcing patients to leave the state for care that can and should be provided here only exacerbates burdens on the patients and their families. The current abortion ban in Georgia limits our ability to provide the compassionate and full-spectrum reproductive counseling and choices to our patients, including those requiring multifetal reduction. While you were able to hear from two women who personally experienced the harm of the abortion ban, remember that there are many other patients with stories of their own. The aftermath of these experiences will only continue to worsen the overall health of pregnant patients and families in Georgia. Thank you so much for having me here today.
Well, thank you, Dr. Chandra Sekaran. Thanks in particular to Avery Davis Bell and Callie Beal Harper for sharing your personal experiences with the public. And thank you all for being here to hear these firsthand stories of how Georgia's extreme six-week abortion ban puts at risk the lives of women in our state. My office will continue to investigate Georgia's maternal health crisis, including the impacts of Georgia's abortion ban, the availability and quality of health care and our state's shockingly high maternal mortality rate. And for members of the public, I want to encourage you to share your stories as well. If you or a loved one has been impacted by Georgia's six-week abortion ban, please let my office know. You can reach out confidentially at ossoff.senate.gov/ga-abortionstory. Thank you all so much for being here, and thank you again to our extraordinary and courageous witnesses for your testimony. Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you all. Thank you so much. Okay, any questions from the press?
Have you had any movement or discussions with state leaders who have pushed for this law? I'm sure they're hearing these stories too. Is there any movement and discussions of maybe taking a second look at this?
I have not seen any such indications. What I would encourage our state leaders to do is to listen to these women whose lives were put at risk during pregnancy as a result of state law.
Your wife works with pregnant women. What kind of influence and what kind of stories does she tell to you?
Yeah, my wife, like OB-GYN physicians across Georgia and across the country, want to do the best for their patients and work every day to bring healthy new life into our world and support pregnant women. And here in Georgia, I want to emphasize this again, we have one of the highest maternal mortality rates in the country. More than half of our counties have no OB-GYN physician at all. So even before this abortion ban, we faced an underlying maternal health crisis, lack of access to prenatal care, suffering and death that are unnecessary. And as you've heard from these two women today, our state's six-week abortion ban, and we've heard it repeatedly in hearings and oversight sessions like this one, from women and from doctors, have forced women to carry non-viable pregnancies and have put women's lives at risk.
So your wife is feeling the same frustration that you heard from the other doctor today?
Well, we've heard from physicians repeatedly about not just their frustration, but their outrage that they are prevented from providing life-saving care to pregnant women in Georgia.
This meeting in Georgia, they're going to be hearing a bill on a total abortion ban this Wednesday that would also criminalize women and doctors. And I think there are a lot of fears that could result in that comes under this administration at a national level. What are you hearing on that, and what are you doing to try and stop it?
We already have one of the most extreme abortion bans in the country here in Georgia, and doctors already fear criminal prosecution for providing necessary health care to their patients. And again, we heard today from a woman who was forced to travel out of state to get necessary health care and whose life was put at risk as a result, and from a woman who, whose doctors, as she told it firsthand today, had to wait until she approached death in order to provide health care. And what I found so powerful about the stories we heard today is that these women described to us how they're already grieving. They're already under tremendous stress and in pain and in fear, and their families are grieving. And yet, they're forced to wait until they become sicker and sicker and sicker and approach death before medical care can be provided.
Can you talk about the importance of having an event like this, hearing these stories at this specific point in time?
Well, I've held a series of hearings because it's important that the public hear directly from women who have been impacted by this law and doctors who practice in our state and not just from elected officials. So I want to continue to provide this platform to women who have been impacted in Georgia and to those who are practicing medicine in Georgia so that the public can hear those firsthand testimonies.
Any other questions from the press?
Do you think there's an opportunity to strengthen any federal laws such as AHTALA to begin to address the situation that you're seeing here in Georgia? And is this Congress going to be open to, you know, rotate that?
I have not seen any indications yet from my colleagues of such interest, but what I'm going to do is use the power that I have to conduct oversight and investigations to continue investigating the maternal health crisis that we have here in Georgia.
Any more questions? Great. Thanks, everyone.
Okay. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Thank you all again for mentioning it all.
Let me know if you guys need anything later. We'll pick some stuff for you guys as well.
Yes.
Did you put that square down?
Nope.
Down to the lobby.
Thank you.
Yes.